One minute. No, this is the strategic. By the hair, your chinny chin chin. Good evening. I'd like to thank you for coming to the Albany City Council Work Session, Monday, November 27, 2023 at 4:00 PM. I will now call the meeting to order, and please do a roll call.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II, Counselor Smith, McGee,
President.
Novak, Newton, Kopczynski,
Here.
And Montague.
Here.
Five counselors present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. I just see word that Counselor Novak is rapidly trying to get here. Business from the public. Does anyone? Anyone sign up to speak? Nope, no one signed. Would anybody, would anyone in the gallery like to address the City Council this evening? Thank you. Annual update on the citywide strategic plan. Director Bailey will be speaking with us this evening. I imagine there's a presentation. I hope you had a great Thanksgiving.
It was lovely, and you as well. Okay, I'm gonna try to share my screen again. All across our fingers. Okay. Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we're providing the first ever, I think, annual strategic plan report. And Counselor Smith can correct me if I'm wrong, because she knows everything. So, as far as we know, this is the first time that the city has prepared a formal annual report on the strategic plan with a public presentation to the council, and then the document will be posted on the web and available to the public. So you've all been handed out a copy. And so we'll be going through that. But first, I have a few introductory remarks. This report is one of the first, one of the key steps in the strategic planning cycle. So this strategic planning cycle began in late 2021, as I'm sure everyone remembers, when staff in the council began working on a review. And then in February of 2022, we held workshops with a consultant and updated some of the goals and objectives, did a deep dive into sort of what the council wanted in the strategic plan. Then that resulted in a draft strategic plan, and it was circulated and made available to the public, and then adopted in September of 2022. And so this is the current strategic plan, which covers 2022 through 2026. So it's a four-year plan. The strategic plan, it's important to note that it's the council's document. It's the primary means by which you give long-term direction to the city manager of what you would like to see done with the city. And then it trickles down through goals and objectives and into departments for actual annual work tasks. As part of the cycle, the city manager asked each department to develop a department operational plan. So that ensures that the objectives in the strategic plan are tied to the operations and budgets of each appropriate program. Peter calls this "operationalizing" the strategic plan. And it's the first time we've done something like that. So now each department has their own operational plan. And that was a new process, and it took us several months. We also asked each department to review their progress towards goals and objectives of the strategic plan over the last roughly 12 to 18 months. So this is, it says annual, but it's really more like year and a half or so to compile into this annual report. Future annual reports, our goal is to provide to you each year roughly in August. So at the end of each fiscal year, we will document our accomplishments and progress on the goals and objectives for that fiscal year and give you the same report. So the next one is gonna feel like tomorrow, and you'll be sitting here in August saying, "Didn't we just do this?" This time, it's a little bit delayed because we were trying to figure this out. It's the first time we've done this. It took quite a bit of time to come up with the mechanics of how to build department plans, how to build this report, and gather all of the information. So that's why this one is a little bit delayed. And we're still sort of working through the process of making this become just part of what we do. So that's sort of the phase that we're in right now.
Chris, what is the acronym KPI?
Key Performance Indicators, so metrics, basically. Okay, so here we are today. We're presenting this annual report to you. And then next steps are going to be a biennial plan update. So tentatively, we have this scheduled to take place in February of 2024. And this will be a process by which the council will review the current objectives in the plan, discuss gaps or objectives that have been accomplished and can be removed, and then we'll make an addendum to the existing strategic plan. But this is more like a refinement of the existing plan, because remember, this is a four-year plan that's supposed to get us out through 2026. So that, you'll be getting more information about in the new year. And the report that you're getting today, hang on to, because hopefully, the intention is that you will make notes and have questions, and we can go through those today. But as you're preparing for this biennial plan update in February, we'll be good to review this document to get ready for that meeting. And then the next comprehensive update of the strategic plan will be in 2026. So the process is set up so that every fourth year, we'll do a full deep dive into the strategic plan. And really, at that point, analyze how the city has or has not made progress toward the sort of aspirational themes, the four themes, and how they're described, and the overarching goals and objectives. So at that time, it might be good to say, you know, we're not really working quickly enough towards this particular theme. We'd like to see more work in that area. And that will be a deeper dive in 2026. So this cycle has been developed so that it will align with the biennial budget development. One thing we've heard repeatedly for I don't know how many years is that the council would like to have a better timed opportunity to give input into budget development. So for instance, next year, we'll be doing this annual report review in August. You'll see what we've done, and then that gives opportunity to give input before we start the next budgeting process, which will start next fall, like this time next year. So you'll have time to give input into the budget, and you'll have information from the current annual report and the one that you'll get next August. So that's sort of the intention is. The mental image that I told Matt Harrington is the budget is sort of like a hamster running on a wheel. It's a pretty well-oiled process, and we're trying to throw the strategic planning process in there. So when you have another hamster that jumps on your wheel, it tends to like, one of them gets thrown out. We're trying to avoid that and get both of the hamsters running on the wheel at the same time. And so if it's a little bumpy, that's what we're, we're working through that. But the intention is that the strategic plan review process informs the budget, and the budget really determines how we accomplish the strategic plan. So the goal here is to align both of those things. So with that background, what we're gonna do is walk through the annual report document. I know you haven't seen it. And so we're just gonna go through it. That's all we have to do today, and hopefully it won't take too long. There'll be opportunities for questions, and then we'll see how we end up. Yes, Counselor Montague.
So what I heard you say was that you're developing operational plan kind of process right now. Are you guys documenting all of that so that the next go-around, we have some documentation to point to to say, "This is how we do it"?
We have, operational plans for every department have been built. And every department has to give the designated person, at this point, me, their accomplishments of their department operational plan. And then we will review and update each department operational plan. So not right now, because we just wrote them. But next year, at the end of next fiscal year, go through, and you know, you can scratch off your objectives. And the department operational plans really, so the strategic plan has these long-range goals. You know, we want a healthy economy and great neighborhoods, and there's all these really big goals that are gonna take years to accomplish some of them. And then there's goals and objectives. And then in the department plans, it really breaks it down into the biennial work plan. And so each department has basically their work plan for the biennium. And then we'll review that before, at the next biennium, and it'll get updated. And it, you know, the goal is to just make this part of our process. This is like who we are and how we get this stuff done. It's a big change. Anything else? Okay, so I'm gonna change screens. And so this is the document you have in front of you, and we're just gonna go through it. So the annual report is organized by strategic plan theme. For each of the four themes, you'll see a brief explanation of the vision for that theme, followed by a page or pages of goals and objectives, and then underneath those, a summary of accomplishments that relate to each of those objectives. Keep in mind that this is a four-year plan, and it's not realistic to expect that every objective is being fully implemented at all times. So some of them might not be ripe. For instance, there may be a sequence problem, that we've got to get one, and then we can do the next. Others, we just don't have capacity necessarily to do everything in this plan all at the same time. So if you don't see any accomplishment that relates to a specific objective, it might mean that the objective just isn't ready to be worked on, or that it's not a current area of focus. But certainly ask if you have questions. Likely what will happen is work related to those objectives will appear in future annual reports. I also want to note that the accomplishments that are provided in this report, which there's a lot, are just a selection of the total volume of work performed by the city over the past 12 to 18 months. So this is not an attempt to itemize every single thing every department has done. We all do more than is in the strategic plan. But it is an effort to demonstrate in a meaningful way how we're implementing the direction that you've provided to us through the strategic plan via the goals and objectives. So the way we're gonna go through this report is we're gonna review together each section. And then at the end, we should have time for questions. And some things to think about as we go along are, were there objectives that you noted that need more focus or less focus? Would you like more or less detail? This is our first one. So tell us how you feel about it. And are there areas where you're not certain if we're actually accomplishing the goals or objectives that seem sparse to you? So please let us know. So we'll start with Great Neighborhoods on page three. So this theme touches on access to housing, education, commerce, and recreation, as well as things such as preservation of natural, cultural, and historic resources. Page four has the first goal and underlying objectives. And for each of these goals and objectives throughout the document, they're taken directly from the strategic plan. And then on page five, you can see the selected accomplishments that support those objectives. So for each of these, I'm just gonna call out some of the things that are on the pages. I can go faster or slower as we go along, so just let me know. But in this case, I'll focus that on several of the accomplishments here have to do with housing. Housing is a big topic of conversation with the council at the last strategic planning session. And so we have lots of objectives and lots of work that's been done related to that. I'll call out the East Albany Plan as another example of how staff has, is working to accomplish the overall strategic plan goal of creating a sustainable Great Neighborhood. And that's sort of the entire impetus for that project. Other things on here have to do with implementing new state regulations related to housing and doing what we can to make the the construction and sale of affordable housing easier to accomplish in town. Page six, we have the next goal and its supporting objectives. This one focuses on transportation. And this has also been a hot topic lately, so you are well aware. As you, on page seven, we talk about pavement condition index. And we've been talking about that with council a lot lately, so probably more than you want to know about that. But you can see here that there's a direct correlation between a council objective, which if you look on page six, in the, about in the middle of the gray area, it says, blah, 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 minimum pavement condition index score of 60 for arterials and collectors. So we have done that. And we've focused on arterials and collectors as streets that everyone uses. And you can see that the result is that we've accomplished that objective for those classifications of streets. And we're almost there for local streets, but local streets are a whole nother story. But this is a good example of how what the council comes up with in here sort of gives us direction and a target that we're shooting for to try to accomplish as staff. Other accomplishments here on page eight. Similarly, we have improvements to the railroad crossings on Water Avenue to be ADA compliant, connections to the multi-use pathway, the Dave Clark pathway, and then improvements to Albany Transit, all of which were objectives listed in the strategic plan and things that have been done within the last year, year and a half. Goal three is stated on page nine. This only has one objective. It specifically mentions meeting Planning Goal Five. Planning Goal Five relates to natural resource management and planning for natural resources. But the overall goal includes more things, including culture and historic resources. So when you look on page 10, we do talk quite a bit about what we're doing in the city to encourage the protection and management of natural resource areas. But we also, in the middle there, have a little bit of a mention about how we support and fund historic preservation and some of the historic assets in town, including the Monteith House and the airport. Goal four is on page 11. And this one talks about providing opportunities for educational, cultural, recreational activities in the community. And then on the next two pages, you can see that there is a multitude of activities, primarily parks and recreation and library have put on that accomplish these objectives. So there are things, there's lots of things. I won't go through all of them. But the summer reading program at the library is outstanding and has broken a new record as far as number of participants. And then we have lots of examples of improvements in parks, adding equipment and updating equipment that have made the community more enjoyable and presented additional recreational opportunities for all of our residents. And then finally, Goal Five, lots of goals under Great Neighborhoods. This talks about efficient use and conservation of resources. And primarily, what we've mentioned here is some work we've done to reduce energy consumption and try to reduce our overall energy footprint at public works facilities, in City Hall, the library, City Hall and the library are scheduled to have upgrades. And then we have several energy management programs we've worked on at Public Works, which we'll talk about a little bit more later. And then, of course, one of the crowning achievements of my career, which is getting the streetlights converted to LEDs, which was a huge accomplishment. So that's it for the Great Neighborhoods section. Any questions on these goals or objectives?
I noticed Goal Three talking about stewardship of culture, of significant natural, cultural, working with the watershed, et cetera, et cetera. But then on Goal Five, I mean, on Goal Four, there's a lot of the, it was mentioned somewhere in here, I was reading through it, developing a fiscally responsible action plan for natural environment and limited resources. And I'm thinking that the watershed improvement programs and things are very connected to the same thing for the natural environment. I'm trying to figure the separation.
Which page are you looking at?
Looking at the Goal Three objective. Talks about watershed improvement programs. And then the objective on, and you have some examples of how that's been accomplished. And then Goal Five says, "Develop a fiscally responsible action plan that protects our natural environment and limited resources." And I'm thinking those are fairly connected.
Yeah. So one thing that you'll probably note is that, and one of the things we'll be discussing at the, in the refinement discussion probably, is that there are sometimes goals under different themes that are somewhat overlapping. And then sometimes goals in different themes that overlap. So for instance, here, we talk about, the goal says, "Resource Conservation and Efficiencies." And so we're highlighting their conservation of energy. And then later on, in Effective Government, you'll see another one where it talks about conservation and efficiencies. So there's, the strategic plan has sort of an overlap.
There can't, there can't be any finite walls between any of these things. I agree.
Yeah, I think it could be a little bit improved so that we could consolidate like things under, under one goal. And that's something that we'll be working on. But it has been interesting to go through and identify where we're like, well, we're doing this, and it applies to multiple objectives or goals, trying to figure out where it fits best.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to, what's next? Safe City. Okay, so now we're on page 17. And the Safe City theme seems to be maybe all about police and fire, which definitely, they do the lion's share of work in keeping us safe. But there are also somewhat less visible programs that we get to highlight here. So in Goal One, multiple objectives about keeping the community safe, protecting people and property. And it's a good example that the city really works comprehensively to achieve community safety. So there are certainly objectives related to reducing crime, eliminating blight, reducing property, you know, complaints and code complaints. And there's also objectives about responding to service in a timely way and, you know, improving our fire system and those things. But there are also other things that are maybe not as obvious, such as we've maintained the Class Five community rating under the National Flood Insurance Program, which gives everyone that has to purchase flood insurance a discount on their insurance plans. We also have the CDBG grants, which help fund services for vulnerable citizens. And then some of the accomplishments on page 19 in the Police Department that might be sort of tangential, I would say are critical, is the addition of the Mental Health Specialist at the Police Department. And I know that she is more than full-time busy. It's a huge need. And then they also created a position in combination with Parks and Rec for a Parks Service Officer. And that's another area of town where we need dedicated help. And so those things, among others, have been important accomplishments under this goal. And continuing on page 20, we have some fire accomplishments. So they've improved their ambulance fleet, focusing on adding capacity and efficiently improving their ambulance fleet by remounting boxes instead of purchasing all-new. They also are upgrading the radio system, which forever has been a problem. And they are a department that definitely needs to be able to communicate across agencies. And then they've done some other work, some great work, which Chief Wooten would, can talk to you for a long time about the use of goats to reduce wildfire risk. And they've improved their fire investigation capability. So lots of work under Goal One. Goal Two is specifically a public works goal. And so it talks about optimizing the two water treatment plants and then managing our biosolids, which when, before, even before this strategic plan, has been a need in the community. So on page 22, we have those accomplishments. We do optimize the use of both water treatment plants. Both water plants run complementary to each other. They're always available, and when, if we have an issue with one, we can turn to the other. And we've also done a lot of work to try to manage energy consumption, because there's a huge nexus between water and energy, if you've ever, if you like to nerd out over stuff like that. And then whatever you can do to reduce your energy consumption in water, of course, helps the ratepayers. And then I won't go into too much more detail about biosolids, because you all know about our award-winning compost program. Hopefully, you all spread your compost and are gonna have great things growing soon. So that is it for Safe City. That was a pretty short one. Are there any questions on those? Okay. Moving right along. Healthy Economy. So the first goal here on Healthy Economy is on page 24, and it talks about supporting the development and expansion of the development and expansion of businesses in Albany. So a couple of notable things here that the staff has worked towards, gotten funding to look at the possible use of tax increment financing in other areas of town that would spur a dedicated investment in those areas. And they're also working, continuing to work on the enterprise zone, which we'll talk about again a little bit later, sort of to what Councilor Kupcinski was talking about. There's a little bit of overlap in this section. And then goal two is more focused on planning and development to build capacity. So under this goal, we have started to do the work to optimize the use of the airport. We haven't completed those studies yet, but we're working on that. And then economic development, created an advisory committee with subject matter experts to try to come up with advice, input on expanding and improving the economic opportunities in the city. And then they're working on developing an economic development plan and strategies, and that work is ongoing. In goal three, we have a focus on job creation, retention, and training. So on page 28, the accomplishments there. So our staff works with LBCC and the Chamber Works Source Oregon to identify and advertise opportunities and try to create some synergy and relationships between workforce and training And then goal four, which is the last goal in this area, it focuses on investment in the downtown core with emphasis on improving the waterfront and creating housing, private investment, and residential development downtown. And as you're all aware, we have a huge investment going on in the waterfront area, including Montit Park and Water Avenue, to help rebuild the city's connection to the river. And that has led to a recent partnership with a private development group with their initial proposed plans for a significant commercial and residential development downtown. So good progress there, is sort of accomplishing directly what those objectives had spelled out. Any questions on Healthy Economy? We're cooking.
Reese.
Okay. So last of the four themes is Effective Government. And this theme applies to all departments, including those that haven't appeared directly in their report to this point, but are critical to our success. So on page 32, we have the first goal, which has a huge list of objectives. This is about city as an organization working effectively and efficiently and maximizing the use of our limited resources. So this is a huge and overarching goal, and we have three pages of accomplishments. And that's just really, it just barely scraping the surface of what all the different departments have done. So we're, on page 33, the first call-out box is talking about how almost every department and program is using technology to become faster, more responsive, and less reliant on the time-consuming process of moving paper around. When I first got here, you know, we have the Holy Joes, the inter-office mail envelopes. And, I mean, I used to get dozens in a week. And I was out all last week. I had one when I got back today. So doing a whole lot better job of accomplishing things electronically, using technology like DocuSign and those sorts of things. Additionally, in Public Works, we accomplished or working towards accomplishing the third objective on the list, which is to improve and expand our asset management system. This is an ongoing and never-ending process. Probably we can always do better at asset management. We continue to add capacity there all the time. And we also, the council approved the Stormwater SDC, which is related to objective nine, about a fully funded stormwater management program. And that's a key part of having the funding needed to maintain and repair and improve our stormwater system. And then the bottom, which my little picture is covering up here, the city's bond rating ties directly to objective 13 in this goal. And so we maintain a strong bond rating due to the good work of the finance department and other departments in maintaining our balances and reserves. On page 34, we have some of the grant funding the city has received. So fire and parks and rec are called out specifically here. I'm sure there have been others, but we just don't have room to list all at all, I think. And also want to note that the IT department and, it says City Manager's Office, it's really Matt Harrington, have started the process of migrating to city of, or albanyoregon.gov domain, which is not a requirement, but if you want to get grant funding from the Federal Cybersecurity Agency, then you have to have a .gov domain. It's much more secure. The distribution of .gov domains is limited, from what I understand. I paid attention to Sean Park. And so that migration is ongoing right now. It's a huge project. It helps keep us safe and helps ensure that we can get funding in that area if we need it. And then on page 35, just a laundry list of accomplishments from IT. And every department is using the IT services more and more, which makes us more efficient, but creates a huge number of vulnerabilities that IT has to manage, not least of which is staff. And they have to protect us against these threats, analyze what's happening in the world, and then, if needed, recover from a cybersecurity incident. So they have a huge workload, both in cybersecurity and general support of, I forget how many it might be on this page, 1,293 different applications. So a huge amount of work that IT does is just an example of what goes on behind the scenes.
Any thoughts given to, I see the cybersecurity maturity level metric, whatever that exactly means, on a scale of zero to seven. Will going over to the .gov impact that in any way, shape, or form?
Is Sean Park in the back of the room? I don't know, but I can find that out. I'm going to say yes.
That was my hope. Thank you.
I can imagine that if we're getting more grant funding for cybersecurity, that means we'll be able to put some money there to increase that rating. That's just my thought process on it.
I don't even know where 4.87 falls in terms of like municipal average cybersecurity maturity level. I bet Sean would love to come and talk to you about that, though, so we'll be sure to ask him. But we'll get information on that.
Thank you.
I do know that they, we have a ton of training. And fake phishing emails they send to us, staff is laughing. Do you guys get them too? The councilors?
Yes.
Okay. Really super fun when you accidentally open the fake phishing email. Yeah. So, okay, so IT does a ton of work. And I think I, I don't think I'm wrong when I say that all of us who use our systems are the weakest link there. So it's important to be on our guard. Okay. And then goal two in Effective Government focuses on communication and engagement. Again, this is an area that every department touches on, whether they're internal or external facing. So accomplishments in this area are on pages 37 and 38. So we have community activities, such as if I were mayor. And we go to local outreach and job fair events. We're organizing right now to go to the South Albany High School Career Day in February. We also have internal communications, such as the all-hands meetings, the employee newsletters that go out, that, you know, most people don't see, but really help us stay in touch with each other and work as a team. And then, last but not least, improvements in our communication efforts. So we are currently going through some training. We've had training on media engagement. We're getting training on plain language, which, you know, we are a world of acronyms, so this is going to be really helpful. And then also having worked on our improvements in making our communications accessible. So we have new standards for documents and presentations, including things such as descriptions of pictures and other things to help our, improve our accessibility rating. So that's it for our first-ever strategic plan report. Didn't take too long. And so this is, the purpose of this report is to update the council and the community on the work that city staff has done to implement your goals and objectives that you've provided for us in the strategic plan. And again, just a reminder, you'll get another one in August, which will feel like tomorrow. And then I need to say thank you, because although this was my task, Matt Harrington and Mary Dibble, we had a powerful team of three that got this whole thing done, including the department plans, the KPIs, everything. And then also, of course, all the department directors and their staff, many of whom are in the back. And they put in a lot of extra effort that I'm sure they weren't planning to have to do this year, to develop all of this and put it all together. So with that, any other comments or questions for us?
Counsel. Thank you so much, Director, for your report. I'll turn to the council, see if they have questions, comments. Counselor Smith?
The paperless office concept, how is that affecting the interaction with applications for the citizen advisory groups? Do we get any requests for paper application forms?
Kenzie, do we get requests?
It's not often I get to sit here. So for the citizen advisory groups, we do have specific links that we send out. I'm sure you have seen those. We received one application last year that somehow they found, like back when our applications were paper and they were all the same, you just put in the group at the top that you want to apply for, but same questions, everything. We received one of those last year. We're not really sure how that person ended up with it. It wasn't posted anywhere. And as far as I know, no staff member has it. Otherwise, I haven't received any requests for paper copies. I haven't had any of the liaisons come to me and say that somebody has approached them about it. I haven't had any counselors come to me about requests for that. So it is still an option. It's not something we come into contact with. So at this point, it seems to be all okay, paperless.
I occasionally have constituents who are concerned about that, but I don't know if they follow up on it.
Oh, yeah. And so anytime any constituent brings that up to you, definitely you can send them my way, and I can, I can make that accommodation for them, and we can get them processed. Yeah?
Two other comments. I'm pleased to see the effort, ongoing effort, to work on wildfire mitigation risks around residents. I had been talking about that, well, I heard concerns about that back four fire chiefs ago. Primarily, the focus started when North Albany was annexed, and that was a concern because of the steep hillsides and so on. So good work on that. And amen for keeping the Plain Language Initiative alive.
Nice.
Someday, someday, ordinary people can read all city documents and say, I know what that means.
Yeah.
So thank you.
It's an effort, sure.
It is an effort.
It's not me, I think it's Matt.
It's so easy to lapse into...
Right.
Yeah.
Jargon.
Yeah, the wrong place.
Counselors?
I just want to say thank you. That's a lot of work, and I intend to look at it more closely.
Sure.
But it's, thanks.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, hang on to it. If you lose it, it's fine, we can get you another one. Or if you'd like it electronically, I don't know how we'll do that, it's huge, but we'll figure it out. But Gabe wants to say something.
It'll be posted to the website with the staff. Staff, thanks for this. So if you go to the website, today's meeting, I'll upload it sometime tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great.
So we will be using this, or hoping that you will use that, to provide us some input in February when we do the strategic plan review.
Any other counselors? Counselor Newton?
Yeah, I was curious, in February, when we meet, what is the format going to be? Or how is that meeting going to be set up? Are we going to be submitting notes, or questions, or suggestions beforehand? Or want to just know more about?
Good question. Someone who's in charge of that should figure that out. That would be me. So I think we'll probably try to get some feedback from the council about how you would feel like that would be most productive. If you have pre-meeting input, for sure that would be great, because it always helps us prepare and move things along a little bit faster. So I'll be getting in touch, you know, it's like a whole couple months away, so plenty of time.
I feel like I thought it was just the beginning of the year a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Time's gone by so fast.
It is, it does.
It's slipping right along.
But we'll be reaching out. And, you know, last time we did this virtually, I don't know if that worked super great. Might be better to have more of a workshop-type approach to it, if we can logistically figure that out. So more details to come.
So done over virtual, at least right now. Counselor Kupcinski?
A great, huge effort. Thank you very much for all that, putting that all together. Any consideration possibly to putting like an OCR code on each one of the sections, so somebody could zoom in on that one section real easily? Or a link directly to that section?
I will pass that on to the expert in the back of the room. Yeah.
It's a thought.
Yeah, sure. It's great.
Counselor McGee?
I think this is a great first step. I look forward to the refinement process. I like the fact that it's in layman's terms. I'm about succinct language, so the short of these get the better.
Yeah. Yep. That's hard sometimes. Thank you.
Counselor Monogue?
I'm just going to echo what everybody's saying. This is fantastic work. It's fun to thumb through it and go, oh, yeah, that happened, you know? So it's kind of cool to kind of look back and see all the things that the city's accomplished. And I'm just really proud of everything you guys are doing, so.
Thank you. Yeah, tons of work by lots of people.
Well, Director, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. And I have the actual strategic plan that we finished, so I'm going to love going through both of them, kind of bouncing off each other. I must say that I've longed for something like this to find out, because I talk about us, our city, all the time to other mayors, and I say, neener, neener, neener.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. And as I said at the beginning, if you find that there are areas of thinness, that you feel like you should be dressed out a little bit more, or other things, this is a draft, although it's pretty much the final draft, unless there's something major, we'll end up publishing this, and it'll be the actual thing. And then we'll come back and talk with you about how to make it better next time.
Well, I agree with my counterparts about plain language. I think it's getting rid of all the acronyms and all those kinds of things makes it easier for someone to read.
Sure.
Especially when more and more young people, high schoolers, are getting involved or trying to find out more information, this helps with that a great deal.
It has not been translated into teen speak.
Well, I think a lot of the teens that are interested in this will understand it completely.
I do have a question.
Yes, yes, it would be.
Will this also be translated into the Spanish version?
Yes, so Matt and I have talked about that already, so we're going to get that done.
Thank you so much for that question.
Would you repeat what you said? I totally missed it. Forgive me.
I just asked, would it be translated to Spanish?
Oh, okay.
For our Spanish-speaking folk.
Yes.
Great question. Thank you so much. Well, with that, well, thank you, Director, again, for presenting this great work from the staff and directors. Peter, my congratulations to you as well for leading this effort, or at least delegating this effort to the right person.
That's right.
Mayor, if I could just take a minute?
Please.
You know, this is, the strategic plan, your strategic plan is a forward-looking document, looking well into the future and identifying what we need to accomplish in the city. This annual report is a backward-looking document, looking back at the year in review and providing you, our board, and the community with an idea of what has been accomplished. So I wanted to stress it's, the purpose for the document to be a vital tool for engagement, for working with our community and letting them know what the work has been that we've done for them. So when I asked Chris to take this on, she very graciously agreed, and I think you would all agree that she's done a fantastic job. It is a lot of work. It is quite a bit of work, but I think it's something that we owe the community and to. we owe the community in terms of feedback. So, I'm, I'm very grateful to Chris for her efforts.
Thank you, Director. Next on today's agenda is business from the council. I'll start on that end and work this way.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you.
I'm, I've been authorized by Santa Claus to invite everybody here in the room and in the audience, virtually or otherwise, to come to the carousel on weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, right through Christmas Eve. And you can have your picture taken with Santa Claus. And it's no charge.
Thank you, Santa. Counselor Ray.
A quick update. Didn't burn the turkey. Was fantastic. Thanks for the hot tips, Matt. Did not get my hands on a smoker, but was able to recreate my own. And no one died. And everyone had a great time. So, first time hosting Thanksgiving. Got all, all my in-laws, everyone around one table with the help of a whole bunch of folding tables. So, yeah, thanks for everyone's vote of confidence. That was a, something I've never done before.
Well done. Counselor Ms. Smith?
A reminder of the Downtown Twice-Around Parade on Sunday at five.
Thank you. Counselor Montague?
I think since we last met, we participated in the Veterans Day Parade. And I just want to thank the Parks Department for letting us ride on their carousel. We had a great time. It was a little wet, but we, there was still a great turnout. And thank you for all those who participated. It was a great time.
Counselor. Counselor Novak?
Thank you. I was actually going to inquire about Counselor Newton's turkey. So, thank you for that. And then I was going to mention the Twice-Around, so that's been covered as well. I guess I have nothing else to say, except it was a lovely holiday and nice to be back. It goes by so quickly. We had two whole weeks, and here we are.
I have just a few things myself. The Veterans Parade was fantastic. We had less entries because the Brewers and the Ducks decided to play at home on our parade day. And so, we didn't have either the bands, but the turnout was great. I met people from all over Oregon, Grants Pass, Portland, Vail. It was really wonderful to have the community come out and other communities join us. And Noah Salazar, if I were mayor winner, he didn't want to wear a jacket. So, he wore a suit. And he was absolutely beautiful. And we did break down. This was later in the parade. We turned it off and it kind of went dead on. And so, we had to get a jump. But it was overall a great turnout and great event. I'm excited about the count, the contest, just not the contest, the parade coming up this weekend. It was expanded last year. I'm hoping it gets bigger this year. It was just a great turnout. And a lot of people came out and kids joined the city and, and celebrating the Christmas season. And then the If I Were Mayor contest, Matt Harrington, our Communications Officer, has done a wonderful job getting that out to the community. I've already received four requests from teachers to come out and talk about the contests with kids. And so, we're scheduling for the first week of February, excuse me, January, and the second week of January, going out and visiting with the kids about the contests. With that, I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
I have nothing further. Mayor?
Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 4:50 PM on this day, 27 November 2023. I will see you again on Wednesday night at 6:00 PM for the City Council meeting at Heron East Chambers.